Thank you for throwing in your words prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven...
Hallelujah. I'll be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses. Let us wait for your love to trust us against us. Lead us in temptation, but deliver us from it.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A, uh, hold the tablet?
No.
Any questions?
Ever-present church submitted their application for a lunch on Sunday, February 11th, from 12:00 to 4:00 in the city center concourse.
Any questions?
The bid submitted their application for their annual beer walk on Saturday, February 24th, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. This would be around the downtown area.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One, uh, what, exactly what's the area? I didn't s- I didn't get a map with this. Normally, you get a map of an area.
Yep, it'll be the bid district map.
So that's Elock Street, off the whole bid area?
It'll be the whole bid area.
Okay. And the other thing, they're requesting a police officer for, uh, crosswalk?
Yes, they are.
Which crosswalk?
I don't know. Sean, do you happen to know which crosswalk?
I don't know exactly which crosswalk. They're asking what we can get back to on that.
You never get back to me, Sean.
Okay. Assuming that it's gotta be probably the one down, right down here, main center.
And, and the exemption they're asking for, is that just for that night?
Yes, it's just for that night, for the ve- the hours of the event. Yep. And this would move to, oh, I'm sorry, there is a resolution per our discussion at the last time we talked about open container during events, that would move to the February 12th business meeting.
Any other questions?
And the last one is Batavia Concert Band requested to hold their summer concert series on Wednesdays from June 26th through August 7th in Centennial Park, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m.
Council report, next new council meeting will be held Monday, February 12th, 24th, at 7:00 p.m., the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor of City Center. Did everyone get their, uh, budget or work system calendar?
Yes.
Anyone okay with that? Okay. Uh, appointments. Historical Preservation Commission appointment, Gregory Howlett.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Council President.
Mr. Nelson, right? Howlett?
Yep, Halik, Halik. Um, Gregory came to City Hall asking to be appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. He filled out the application with Heidi's office, and I believe that Tammy and Kathy were able to make contact with him to discuss his interest. He is a City of Batavia resident.
Very involved.
Okay. Um, want to move that forward. This would also move forward to the, uh, February 12th business meeting for his appointment to serve on the board.
Everyone okay with that?
I, I noticed something, I, it's probably a typo, but maybe in the resolution, it says something about reappointment. And I didn't think he was already on it.
Yeah, it should just be an appointment.
Okay, yeah, it's in the letter, January 8th, appointing Historic Pres- says recommend council approve a reappointment of Gregory Howlett to the Historic Preservation.
Yep, the resolution actually doesn't have reappointments, so...
No, it doesn't. It doesn't say anything.
It says the following appointments to be made in the term to December 31st, 2026.
So Greg hasn't been on it, then?
He has not, uh, he is not a previous member of the commission.
Was that Bob?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, provision is appointment of committee, the citywide zoning code update?
Thank you. Um, the city's comprehensive master plan was adopted in 1997 and redone in 2017. We finalized and adopted the comprehensive plan through action of council at that time. And one of the significant recommendations was that the city undertake a zoning code update after the, um, master plan was completed. For various reasons, we haven't been able to finish that process of the zoning code update. So tonight, I'm recommending that we go ahead and set up a committee for the zoning code update. The committee, um, members were solicited from the City Batavia Planning and Development Committee, the Zoning Board Appeals, and the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, they, certain members expressed interest. You have those members here, plus one member has been volunteering to get on a city committee, which is Zeke. Uh, so I was hoping that tonight council would move forward in creating the committee and moving forward for the zoning code update and review. It's probably gonna be roughly a year-long process. Um, it will include public meetings, public input, and the committee will move forward to bring a final recommendation of zoning code reviews to City Council.
Any questions? Are we okay to move?
I have a couple of questions. Yeah, and one of the things, uh, it says, uh, Batavia committed $75,000 from the general fund. What's the $75,000 gonna be used for?
The $75,000 will be used for a consultant, planning consultant, to take us through the process, very similarly to when we did the comprehensive plan. We like to hire a professional planning firm to take us through the process of rewriting the zoning code.
Do we have a firm picked out now, or?
Yes, we did solicit a bid from Lobella Engineers and a proposal, and we would like to move forward with Lobella for this. And because the funds are already committed, I'm approved to go ahead and move forward with that.
Okay, Nate, uh, who's the council member you're gonna put on?
I think that is up to the council members to decide who would like to volunteer. I don't know if Council President Jankowski's email had that in it. It did?
Yes, it did.
Okay. So any interested council members?
I could be interested. I served on the zoning board for like five or six years.
Sure.
Chairman of it, so just throw my name out there if no one else is.
Thank you, Bob. Nothing to be answered right now, but, but, uh...
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be great, and then we can, with the resolution moving forward, I'm just fill in the name of the council member, that'll be helping with the process.
Okay, any other questions? For all of the participants today?
Thank you very much.
Next is budget ordinance resolution, to schedule a public hearing for February 12th meeting?
Yes. Attached is the City of Batavia Fiscal Year 2425 Budget Ordinance Resolution to Schedule a Public Hearing. As you all are aware, a public hearing must be scheduled, final to consideration and vote of the budget. The budget fiscal year begins on April 1st. The budget you have before you is presented. Um, I wanna thank all the department heads and managers for all your hard work. They start in October, getting pricing, um, submit budgets shortly thereafter, meet with me all November, in December, and continue the process of meeting with council to explain their budgets and their needs. So thank you all very much for a very good budget process that we've had thus far. Um, the budget does not exceed the 2% tax cap. An average homeowner, and the average home is worth $100,000 here in the city, would pay $896 in city taxes with this budget. Um, also, you have your water and sewer rates included in the budget. An average homeowner, a family of four, would pay $149 per quarter for both their sewer and water services here in the city. The total budget with all funds is $37 million. The tax rate increase is two cents from 894 to 896 this year in the proposed budget, and the general fund budget increase is 2.3 million, made up of 1.1 million of capital investments using reserves. So that's vehicles, buildings, parking lots, sports courts resurfacing, and a very big investment in streets and sidewalks this year, utilizing chip funds of 1.37 million for those investments. So that's why you see the large increase in the budget, but we are able to keep the tax rate relatively stable. So we are going to break after the meeting and go through revenue and some prepared slides I have, and we can talk more, but I'm happy to answer any questions now.
Is there any...
Pardon? Yes.
Is there any chance of leaving the tax rate the same?
We can certainly talk about that. I can give you my recommendations when we get into the discussions, um, tonight, but there's a lot of things that were unfunded in the budget I'd like council to be aware of.
Because we don't know yet if assessments will go along, right? I mean, we don't have...
The assessment from last year is the assessment we use, so we do have the assessment rate. We don't use next year's assessment for this budget. It was set in July.
Rachel, did you see the Batavia article today regarding the increase in rates in the water and sewer?
I did not, no.
It indicated, maybe erroneously, or maybe I misinterpreted it, that the annual increase for water and sewer was gonna be approximately $600 a year.
Um, no, that's not correct.
Right. That was my interpretation. Maybe we need to get something out there to review that, because I've already had several phone calls concerning it.
Sure, no, absolutely not.
Any other questions?
If this is, if we're setting, are we voting on this resolution tonight to set?
No, we're moving it to February 12th.
Okay.
It's just to set the public hearing, not voting on the budget. We're setting the public hearing for the budget, then next...
That's what I just asked, if we're just, if our movement is tonight or not.
Are we all consensus to move it to February 12th? Next, we have the 2425 water and sewer rate local law resolution to schedule a public hearing for February 12th.
Yep, so the same mechanics of this resolution, moving to the next business meeting to schedule that public hearing. Public hearing would be February 26th for both of these items. The, uh, total waterfront budget is 6.6 million, about a $750,000 increase from last year, mainly due to increases in prices of chemical, inflation, and capital purchases. The, as a reminder to council members, many who have sat through long presentations on our strategic water rate and capital plans, we created them in 2015. They're updated again this year in 2023 to reflect our current priorities and capital improvements. Um, rate adjustments allow us to save over time to make those improvements, so we don't have a $600 increase in one year, that's for sure. So the water rate would be 646. The typical water and sewer bill combined annually for a household with four residents is 149 per quarter. And just wanna look at something. So the increase in the sewer and water combined, water doesn't, or sewer does not have a rate increase, is $3.80 per person per year. A household of four, and that's the typical household, would be an increase of $15.20 for a household of four for the entire year with these rates that we're setting. And again, we set the rates based off of a capital plan that saves money so we can do water projects as we needed. Big ones coming up are the Cohocton Water Line, Pearl Street 1 and 2, they're both in excess of $2 to $3 million projects that we need to make sure we have appropriate capital to complete those projects.
I guess I didn't add it that way. The water meter charge, if you have the 5.8 meter, and I don't know if that's standard for residential, but that's going up $2 a quarter, so that's eight a year. Uh, the sewer usage, I guess, is staying the same, but the sewer meter charge of the 795, I don't know if that's up or down. Residential homes don't have sewer meters, so I'm not exactly sure how we ever came up with the 795. We have one meter, but we don't have a sewer meter.
Correct.
And the capital improvement fee is going up $6 a quarter, so that's another 24 on top of the eight, so I don't know how it's $3 a person. I'm looking at 20 to 25 a quarter, which is 100 a year.
Just, I was just referring to the rate, what the rate is doing.
So the rate is up 19 cents from, uh, 6.7 to 6...
Correct.
46, but then you have all these other fees that are up. So it's gonna be about 100 more per year, per household, depending on your usage. If you use more water, it could be more than 100, and it also went up quite a bit last year. So again, I'm a little concerned because we got a lot of poor people in Batavia. I don't know how landlords feel, we got a lot of landlords. I pay the water bill on all my departments, and this would force me to raise my rents, you know, they're getting unaffordable as it is. So I don't know if you landlords pay a water bill on all of your places, you got way more than I have, that's gonna cost you, and you're gonna have to force that on your tenants. With tax increases, you know, water increases, we went through this last year.
I'm sure we can discuss this in the, in the budget meeting. Was this just to schedule a public hearing? Are we...
Wrong.
Uh, going out on, uh, February 12th?
Oh, yes, to schedule a hearing.
Any other questions? Thank you. Annual resolution, strategic plan?
Yes, so you were all provided a strategic plan. It's a nice colored sheet. These are a plan that we reviewed in detail in 2022. Um, I was going to go through what's new and what's been added. The strategic plan comes from an amalgamation of what staff is hearing from residents, what council members come to us with, and we try to set our priorities for the year so that management has a direction of what they will be doing during the year, what we'd like to achieve, and it also helps us, anytime a resolution comes forward, point back to the strategic plan as a reminder that this was a project, or this was initiative, that was approved by City Council to be done on behalf of the city and its residents. So some of the significant items that remain on the strategic plan is the construction of the police facility, city center redevelopment projects and construction, which would be the silos which are going to construction in April. Um, one of the largest items we're going to have to tackle as a city is about a $13 million lead service identification and replacement planning and construction. So part of the reason we do look at capital planning and water, and we do have a capital planning, or capital fee, is to start saving for that $13 million cost for that replacement. Major citywide, um, public works projects, Brett and his team have done a great job with a number of projects they've undertaken in the last few years, and I'd like to give them a lot of credit for that. They have a lot more projects coming up. There's definitely been infrastructure that has needed a, um, lot of prioritization and a lot of our resources so that we can continue to improve the city. Uh, the redevelopment of the Creek Park project, which is underway, we have reviews going of soil sampling that we've done, we've updated council on that. We need to also do some preparation for the closure of the water treatment plant in the next five to 12 years. We still don't have a good estimate on when that is going to occur and when the county can bring phase wa- phase three water into the city. We need to complete, as per the contract with the Town of Batavia, a wastewater treatment plant expansion feasibility study. So that is an item that is new, but does need to be completed, and we're bound by contract to do that. The town will pay the cost for that study, but we'll be using our engineers to do so. Another recommendation, and we hear from residents a lot about tree planting, is the review, implementation, and update of the comprehensive tree management plan and the formation of a tree board. We got some feedback on the last grant that we did not receive from USDA citing that having a tree board and having an updated plan could have rendered us more points in that application. So it's something we take very seriously and wanna work towards achieving that with a tree board and having an updated plan, so that is another one of our, uh, initiatives that we'd like to achieve. Police accreditation is ongoing, and the chief has made strides, uh, each year in that process, and hoping to have a review in the next year or so of the accreditation plan. So it'll be very exciting when we do have police accreditation for our city. I know when we did the police reform rev- review board, or review work group, um, we had a lot of positive feedback from residents about the way officers handle themselves, and we looked deeply inside each and every policy, and it was a, a very rewarding experience, and the accreditation will just seal that, that our police are doing everything they should be doing by New York state law and federal guidelines. Creating a comprehensive housing strategy, that is something that's been hanging out there. I hear from residents constantly about neighborhoods, about landlord issues, about bad tenants, um, landlords who don't care and keep up their property, uh, wanting more single-family homes, so we need to find a comprehensive strategy to address this. We've had two or three items that will start moving us in the right direction. One is the home fund with the Town of Batavia and GCEDC for grants for home improvement, so please tell your constituents there is funding available. We can put out more marketing pieces on that. And secondly is the grant we were just awarded that we'll talk about further in the meeting for $350,000, single-family home improvement for low and moderate income households. We'd like to make sure we can get funds out on the street for these types of improvements. And then lastly, um, city parks and recreation improvements. Uh, the city has probably needed a master plan for our parks for the last 20 years. We haven't had one. We're gonna need to focus on that. We were lucky to get the Austin Park grant for $500,000, but there's still a significant investment that needs to be made in our parks and our equipment. Um, we have capital planning, which we continue to do as a best practice here in the city, the CRS flood program, which Josh is happy to lead, and zoning ordinance update, which we just discussed. So those are the highlights inside the strategic plan, but if there's any questions or you'd like more explanation, we'd be happy to discuss.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to ask, when you were talking about the police department, I wanna thank Chief Hybush and the entire police department. I had some problems recently in my ward, and they addressed him, um, immediately. They had detectives contact these people, so I wanna thank Chief Hybush and his entire department. Thank you, thank you.
Now, we move to, uh, March 11th?
That's correct. Yep, so this would be passed, um, alongside the budget, when the budget is passed on March 11th.
Any other questions? Annual resolution, capital project resolutions?
Thank you. This also would be moved to the March 11th business meeting. Um, every year, we put together a capital projects resolution. This is right now in draft format because we're still gathering information on the projects that we have upcoming. The addition of projects this year you'll see on the resolution is the Bureau of Maintenance Parking Lot, the playground at Austin Park, the 2425 sidewalk project, the Pearl Street Water Project, that will be two phases, and we'd just like to get underway with design and engineering and hopefully go for a grant for that project, but by listing it on the capital resolution, it allows us to show funding sources, um, that it's been recognized by City Council as a public body, that this project needs to be done. Um, the lead line service inventory and replacement, we do have an outstanding grant application for that.
Yep.
I don't know where it's at, because I believe it is a federal grant, and they're doing continuing, continuing resolutions in DC right now.
Yep, we should hear on that relative...
Yep. The wastewater treatment plant generator replacement, the central, so these projects I'll go six, seven, eight, all the way to the, almost the end, are all what we'd like to apply for an EFC grant for the wastewater treatment plant, and, um, hopefully to include sludge in that. We've seen how expensive sludge removal is. We took it off the agenda for this year, um, when we got bids in, so we'd like to combine all the projects and try to go after what's called an EFC grant to get those done and make critical updates at the wastewater treatment plant that haven't been done for years would have been identified. And the last item in the list I have is the theater roof project. The City of Batavia, prior to myself becoming manager lease space to Harvester Theater 56, and the roof is need, is in need of repairs to the tune of about $310,000. We'll talk about that as we get into the budget.
Thank you. That's also, uh, March 11th?
That's correct.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Next, we have a CBDBG grant agreement?
Yes, as we just discussed, this is a CBDG, CBDG, CDBG, yeah. Grant agreement for, they call it the Housing Rehabilitation Project. The city has been successful in the past in 2010 and 2013, um, helping single-family home own, homeowners with improvement projects, and we'd like to move forward and have the council president accept the grant and sign that grant, and that does move tonight to the business meeting.
Any questions? We're gonna move it tonight? Thank you. Okay, IAFF contract?
The IAF contract, the current collective bargaining agreement negotiated with IAFF Union expires on March 31st, 2024. Over the past several months, the city and union representatives have been negotiating terms for a new agreement. On December 29th, 2023, a tentative agreement was reached with the IAFF Union. It will be a five-year agreement, salary increase of 3% for three years, 2.65% for years four and five, an increase in the healthcare premium to 32.5%. IAFF members will now participate in annual physical fitness incentive program. The holiday of Juneteenth is added as a paid holiday. Some of you may know that police and fire don't actually get holidays, however, they get holiday pay, um, for those holidays because they work 24/7. Um, we added two additional longevity payments at years five and years 15, a one-time payment of $500 to each member from the ARPA, a $500 signing bonus for each member, and other miscellaneous language changes. So I recommend that City Council approve the tentative agreement with the union, move it forward to tonight's business meeting to do so.
Any questions?
Can I ask what the signing bonuses are? Or, I mean, I'm sorry, the longevity payments?
$500 per member. Oh, the longevity payments? I believe at five years, it's 515, at 750, but Rebecca's gonna look it up, and we'll let you know.
Yeah, yeah, you said three and a half percent, is that per year, so the following year, there's gonna be three and a half percent on top of the three and a half?
Nope, 3% each year for three years, and yes, it, it accumulates. Once your salary gets 3%, the following year, that's your base pay, and you'd get a raised cost of living adjustment of 3%.
So that's equals to like a flat rate, maybe 13% over the three years?
It's five years.
Five years.
So three, three, and three is nine, plus 2.65, plus 2.65. 14.3.
But it's actually higher than that because you're getting the following year is 3% on top of the year before, which was 3%.
The base pay changes every year, and they get a cost of living adjustment as agreed upon in the contract of 3% the following year, the following year. That's how every contract that's been negotiated prior to this has worked.
So being the, um, annual physical fitness incentive program number now, will that increase that 3.25% that they, that they gain in the healthcare if they meet the requirements?
Nope.
Or is this a rate that they actually have to pay?
N- no, physical fitness is totally separate from healthcare. Physical fitness is an incentive. If you decide to, um, participate in the physical fitness incentive, you will have the ability to do, um, a physical fitness test, running push-ups and sit-ups, and actually get paid an incentive for staying in shape and meeting milestones per your age and per your, um, gender.
So they can get the annual, just like a bonus for being physically fit?
They can get a payment for being physically fit, yep.
Do you know what that payment is?
I can look it up for you. I can look it up for you. I'm really actually excited about the physical fitness incentive because if you've ever been to a fire scene, they climb ladders, they pull very heavy hoses, they use axes, and the more physically fit you are, the less workers comp injuries we're gonna have, and the more we'll save in the long run.
That's great, oh yeah.
Rachel, one more thing, that four hundred ninety thousand, two seventy-two, that's over the life of the contract.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Yep.
So the longevity payments that were added were at the five-year mark, and that was at five hundred dollars, and another one was added at the fifteen-year mark at nine hundred dollars. And the total incentive for the physical fitness, if they pass and meet all of the qualifications, is a total payment at eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. This is the same that the police department has as well.
Not all members participate in the police department, but the majority do, and the majority do take it really seriously to try to stay physically fit for their job performance.
Incentive, it's a great incentive.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
We can just move it tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, last is AAFF CAF contract?
So the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with AFSMI Union expires also on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Similarly, as IAFF, over the past several months, we met with members from AFSMI and the union and negotiated terms for a new agreement. On December seventh, twenty twenty-three, a tentative agreement was reached with AFSMI, and the union membership ratified such agreement on January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. It's a four-year agreement that includes changes to the collective bargaining agreement as follows: a salary increase of three point five percent for three years, so very similar, three point five, three point five, three point five, two percent for the fourth year. Salary schedule adjustments to align wages with comparable wages in the, in the region were also met, and I discussed this with council at length. The increased healthcare premiums are between thirty and thirty-five percent of what a member pays in. They requested the ability to do a shift change to four ten-hour days in the summer months of June to August, similarly what the county does. They added a floating holiday, pay for additional licenses such as CDL licenses-
Yep, CDLA, tanker endorsement, pesticide-
Yep.
Backfill preventer.
So not everyone will have these licenses, it's up to the department head, but when we do have these licenses, it actually saves the city money in the long run, especially the pesticide license, because you cannot apply pesticide without a license in New York State, and I don't know if it's across the country anymore. Tool allowance to increase for the mechanics to a thousand dollars annually, a five hundred dollar American Rescue Plan payment to each member, and other miscellaneous language, language changes. The entire cost for the four-year contract to the city is three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty-two across all funds. So we have to remember that AFSMI is not just budgeted in the general fund, they also are in the water fund, the sewer fund, and the mall fund as well.
Thank you. Any question, Bob?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, the additional licenses, is that requested by the department? In other words, if everybody goes and gets a CDL, do they all get an increase?
Well, everybody, every HGO is required to have a CDLB, but if they are willing to go and obtain a CDL, A, they could potentially have a fifty per, fifty cent per hour increase in their base pay that is approved by the department head. So it's something that with Scott or Tom and myself, we'd have to sit down and look at individual departments who would benefit from having that license, and we would discuss that, whether it's CDLB, tanker endorsement, pesticide license, anything like that.
Okay, now if someone applies to go get certified to apply pesticides, are they doing that on their own time or company time?
No, it would be company time.
It would be on city time, yes, because they're doing it in furtherance of their job-
Yes.
And their training.
Okay, and then on the total allowance, do they turn in receipts for that, or is that just a flat allowance?
They do, correct? Yeah, they turn in, turn in receipts for that.
Okay, thank you.
Just curious, with the floating holiday, is that because they don't get Juneteenth?
They requested a floating holiday, we offered Juneteenth, and they requested it to be a floating holiday-
Yep.
-instead of that specific day.
So it'll still be a thirteen and a half holidays, it's just, it's a floater instead of Juneteenth?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted a question on the pesticide license, which categories do you have people get licensed in?
We don't have anybody licensed at the moment, so that's something Scott and myself would have to sit down with also Brian Matz, who's the park public work supervisor, and discuss how we would like to pursue obtaining those licenses. Because basically, you'd have to have one person that has a main license, and then below them, you'd have different people that would have an applicator license.
Right.
It's something we would have to work through. Nobody at the city right now currently has that license, and we would kind of have to work through what we're, what we envision that kind of looking like.
So what would you be thinking of taking over, you know, public health things like mosquito spraying, rodent control?
We know we'd be looking more weed control that we currently outsource for a considerable amount per year and take control of that as opposed to having a company come in, basically be on a gator and kind of spray everything. We could have somebody that could take ownership of it. We think we could do a better job overall and save money in the long run.
We've definitely had, I'm sorry to interrupt, issues in the downtown district with our weed control, so we're hoping that we can address it with this, with our own employees being certified, and along with other control at wastewater treatment plant and other things that-
Well, you have to be certified in any public use area to apply any pesticides or so, but also there's a cost per category, so, you know, if you have twelve categories, the cost starts climbing pretty-
So that's one of those things, we'll have to look into it and see exactly how we want to apply that, but we also know we could get a much better product by our employees taking care of that and having that license, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are we consensus to move it tonight?
Yes.
Okay. You have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Schmidt, hold on a second. Mr. Biakowski, floor copies?
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Biakowski?
Yes, sir.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Like the hardware special business meeting? You want to sign the general items? Nine, twenty twenty-four? Mr. McGinnis? Ten, twenty twenty-four? Mr. Biakowski? Eleven, twenty twenty-four? Twelve, twenty twenty-four? Thirteen, twenty twenty-four? Fourteen, twenty twenty-four? Fifteen, twenty twenty-four? Sixteen, twenty twenty-four? Mister Biakowski?
Councilmember President, I move a resolution establishing the city of Batavia as lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECOR, issuing a negative declaration.
You have a second? Mr. Schmidt? Any questions, discussion? Okay, call roll?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
You, fifteen, twenty twenty-four, Mister Twitchell?
Thank you, Councilmember President. I move a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters.
You have a second? Mr. McGinnis? Discussion or questions? Floor call, please?
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Mister Biakowski, ten, twenty twenty-four, please?
Thank you, Mister President. I move an ordinance to amend the city of Batavia zoning code, chapter one ninety zero, to add professional offices as an allowed use in our one AR two, R three, with a special use permit, and to amend the special use permit standards of chapter one ninety, page thirty-seven, B, of the city of Batavia zoning code.
Mister Guy, you have a second? Mister McGinnis? Any discussion or questions? You have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, eleven, twenty twenty-four, Mister Twitchell?
Thank you, Councilmember President. I move a resolution to discontinue the public use and to authorize the council president to sign agreements for the sale of tax foreclosure parcels.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Briggs? Discussion, questions? Floor call, please?
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twelve, twenty twenty-four, Mister Biakowski?
Thank you, Mister President. I move a resolution authorizing use of fifty-five thousand dollars administrative reserve to upgrade fire department software system and amend the twenty twenty-three four budget, twenty twenty-four budget.
Thank you. You have a second? Twitchell? Questions, discussion? Floor call, please?
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, thirteen, twenty twenty-four, Mister Schmidt?
Thank you, Councilmember President. I move a resolution to accept the community development block grant to authorize the council president to execute the grant agreement and amend the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Thank you. You have a second? Question, discussion? Floor call, please?
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
You, fourteen, twenty twenty-four, Mister Briggs?
Thank you, Councilmember President. I move a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters.
You have a second? Mr. McGinnis? Discussion or questions? Floor call, please?
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay. Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
You, fifteen, twenty twenty-four, Mister Twitchell?
Thank you, Councilmember President. I move a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with the American Federal of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
Thank you. You have a second? Mr. Briggs? Questions, discussion? Floor call, please?
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes, sir.
Feely?
Yes.
Okay, sixteen, twenty twenty-four, Mister Biakowski?
Thank you, Mister President. I move a resolution to create a zoning code update committee until point members.
You have a second? Mr. Schmidt? Questions, discussion? Floor call, please?
Councilmember Biakowski?
Yes.
Feely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, could I just, I want to go back, and I apologize, I just did the math on the five-eighths inch disc meter and the capital fee for a typical household. The increase in the meter for the entire year is eight dollars, and the capital improvement fee is twenty-four oh eight, so that would be a total increase of forty-seven twenty-eight for a typical household of four, just to be clear.
Just in the fees for the meter?
No, and the rate together. Forty-seven twenty-eight, including your meter, which are two hundred and sixty-five dollars new when we replace them, and we're doing a full replacement program across the city, capital improvement fees to be able to do the water projects that are needed in lead lines, and then the rate to get your water to operate the plant and to have distribution folks out there when your water lines break in the middle of the winter. So it's not a hundred dollars increase.
I had, I looked it up, the rate for the meter was twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents, and then in the packet, it said it's going up to eighteen ninety-seven, so that to me is six dollars a quarter. I mean, am I something in the packet that's wrong?
Yeah, so six, six times four is twenty-four oh eight capital improvement fee.
Correct.
Right, that plus the eight-dollar meter, plus the fifteen twenty per household equals forty-seven twenty-eight annual increase for a household of four.
Well, based on your usage, I must use a little more than that also.
Yeah, I can't, I can only go off of basic usage.
One shower a day, you know?
Our basic usage is five thousand gallons per person, per household, per quarter. So that's what we base all of our estimates on when we talk about what this will be. So I'm sorry to interrupt the end of the meeting, I just wanted to clarify that it's not a hundred, forty-seven twenty-eight with all N.
But while you're saying it, do people get a sewer meter bill too?
Because water meter is a water sewer meter. It's one meter.
So there's no separate-
There's no separate meter, but there's a separate charge on the new bills that apportions it out because we take your water consumption and we apply it to give you a sewer bill, which is common across all cities.
I know how that works, I just, I think there's some confusion. Some people think that they're getting a sewer meter bill too.
The bill, the new software we have apportions it out to look like you have two separate meters, you have one meter, and that full cost is for that one meter.
Is there any way to change that so it doesn't look like you have two meters?
I don't know.
No. The way the new software was set up three years ago, the utility management system?
If you look at it, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Well, it used to be one, it used to be one meter charge on your bill, and, but half of that meter charge, not half, it's not fifty-fifty, but a portion of that went to the water fund and a portion of that went to the sewer fund. So in order to set up the charges in the brand new system, we had to set up a separate charge for each, instead of it being lumped together in one. It's actually much more transparent this way. However, some people mistakenly think that they actually have two meters, when they really don't, it's one meter that gets apportioned between the water fund and the sewer fund.
And there's no increase in sewer rate, sewer meter fee, nor sewer capital fee this year, and there hasn't been for fifteen years or more. So we have been able to hold